This conference will now be recorded.
Okay, so as you just heard, we are being recorded. No changes to the agenda. Open to the public for items not related to the agenda. Does anyone have anything? I'm not seeing anything in the chat either, so I will. So does anyone have any additional announcements? Or staff report? Okay, we can breeze through that. So it looks like Michael is joining us, which is great. We can, I suppose, jump right into our work session on the Land Development Regulation Amendments. So we got through the subdivision portion of our work last night. So as a reminder, a lot of the information we're talking about is located in the packet for last night's meeting. Just to, in case anybody's looking for what we're doing. We got through the subdivision piece of, of the packet, and then at the end, it was noted that we didn't circle back to the buildable area definition. Seems like that might be a good place to start, just so we can kind of finish up that section and then go into the master planning then. So we did have, there is a draft list of items that would be removed from the buildable area calculation. And then there was a suggestion that the level two resources are additionally removed from the the calculation. I think that's what the discussion was about. Brought up by Michael. I mean, does anyone have any additional thoughts on that, Monica?
Can we just clarify what we're going to be discussing in this section? Because I keep, when I see the phrase "buildable", it says to me land that can be built on. Right?
Yeah.
But then there's the, there's, then there's the land that we're saying can't be built on, but you can count the density. And what, what is that called? I just, I feel like there should be two different names for these things. And I just keep getting confused about which piece we're talking about.
Yeah.
Probably will too. Great.
So Monica, classically speaking, in a, in a standard regulation, the way that buildable area would be defined is the areas where development cannot occur. Meaning typically hazards. Flood plains, wetlands, very steep slopes, railways, that kind of thing. What makes our regulation here a little bit trickier is that you have also designated that you want to be sure that certain other areas, specifically forest blocks, are really no build areas. That, that it's clear that those areas should not be built upon. But for those uses, at least so far, excuse me, those areas, you have proposed that the density still count in a conservation PUD and in, and in other circumstances. So while they cannot physically build there, they would still get credit for that. As opposed to the hazard areas where there would be no credit for it. That's, that's the distinction as drafted, which is not the typical, but it's what we came up with to try to address what the commission was asking for, which was to make sure that the forested areas are elevated to the level of of, of not being subdivided, essentially.
So where that is applicable to our discussion then is for the buildable area. So for the hazards and the things like that, they don't count towards buildable area. So you couldn't transfer that density to other parts of the property. Whereas as we have it written, and I might, please correct me if, when I'm done, I'm wrong, okay? But as it's written, then the, the secondary hazards, even though we have to follow the regulation and can't necessarily build on them, that land would count towards density. So that you could have increased density on the remaining parts of the land that you could build on.
Right. I would say that that's generally correct as drafted. So the things that are currently listed as level two has, as level two resources are the moderate slopes, 15 to 20 or 15 to 25%. The intermittent streams, which have a 10-foot setback. And class three wetlands and wetland buffers. For the class three wetlands and wetland buffers and the intermittent streams, typically they're pretty small in size. And so the idea would be that they would often be able to be incorporated into a, into a given building lot. They'd have to still be avoided. But if you've got a intermittent stream going through your property, it doesn't mean that you have to draw your property lines around it. So that was one of the key elements. And then for the moderately steep slopes, the reason that those would still be counted towards buildable area is that as drafted, it's not a prohibition on development. It's a higher level of engineering to assure that the slopes, slopes are being protected from erosion and things like that. So that's, that's why the drafted difference. For the forest blocks, the reason that those were put into the excluded area in a buildable areas because they are typically so much larger in size that it would become very difficult to, you know, realistically draw lot lines that incorporated them. It's sort of, it's not really being consistent with what your purpose statements are. So, and then I guess lastly, I would say that as drafted, the intent would be that in the rare circumstances where the DRB would allow for a incursion, let's say they allowed for a wetland to be impacted, which is rare, but it could happen, then that would be reassigned to buildable in that instance. And that would most likely happen in the circumstances of the forest block. And specifically, let's say in a conservation PUD, where if it was 95% forest on the property, then you've created an allowance for a certain portion to be built upon. So that, that portion would be re-designated as buildable after going through that process.
But I, I think in general, though, for the, for the level two stuff, the, the intent is that because we're, we're, I'll use the word discouraging, but you know, not having development in those areas, that we're allowing for increased, increased density in the other areas by being able to count that area as buildable.
So that's the level ones, which is the forest blocks. The level twos, as I said, are typically much smaller in size. And so they can generally be, as proposed, incorporated into a lot. The, the rules of Article 12 still stand regardless. If it says that you can't build within the setback, then you can't build within the setback. It's just a matter of how the lot lines are arranged and then later how density is calculated in terms of, do you have to exclude the 10 feet on either side of the stream from your density calculation?
Oh, quick question. So the, the effect of taking the level two resources out of the buildable area is to, it doesn't change the buildable area, it changes the amount that can be built in area or the density?
So the two things, the, the effects would be this. If you put the level twos into, it took them out of buildable area, then you would be first, I guess, encouraging lot lines to be drawn around them, which is in some cases not a bad idea, but for some of these intermittent streams could be some very odd shaped lots. Secondly, it, we would need to figure out a way to become consistent, especially with those moderate slopes, because the moderate slope areas are not really intended to be no build areas. They're intended to be billed with caution. And so to sort of label them as no build, but then in another chapter, put them as billed with caution, we'd have to rectify that. And then thirdly, for the purposes of calculating your density in a, either a standard subdivision or in a, in a conservation PUD, it would affect the density unless you wrote something that said in, back in the PUD chapter, that it counts, you know, that the level twos do count to your density.
Monica?
So if we can all look at the buildable area language within this document that we're talking about. I mean, this section two does say, you know, purposes of these regulations, including the, the plating of buildings, lots, and the calculation of the density or intensity of development allowed within a subdivision. Buildable area is defined as the total area of the parcel to be subdivided less these physical limitations and constraints, which includes hazards and level ones. So it is saying here, the level of the density of your buildable area is less this list of what's currently hazards and level ones. And that does include the habitat blocks. So when I'm reading that statement, and I'm sorry, this isn't about the level twos, but that would be added to this. When I'm reading this language, it reads to me, because I'm seeing the word density there, it's reading to me that any density associated with any land that has any of these limitations does not get to count towards the density in the, in the areas outside of these constraints. So this, this to me reads as if the, so, so this is reading to me that the density that would have been in the forested habitat blocks that we are now adding cannot be moved outside of it.
This is what I,
So that's,
For,
For subdivisions.
Yes. Which is,
So,
the PUDs.
So, and this is where maybe just, because it's so confusing. I, it, I, there were some notes in certain places, Paul, and I called that out before, that I do think it would be helpful to even within this, be able to have footnotes or something that says, something to the effect that if you want to include the density that's assigned to some of these areas, see section PUD and section X that will explain how you can count that density in the other buildable areas. So I'm sorry, I kind of left the, the level two. But that would be the same case for the level twos.
I may, I may have this wrong, but after you've arrived at the, the buildable area, then you can build in that area whatever the underlying density for that zone specifies. So you might have to put, you might get four, four dwellings per acre. And you'd have to, you'd have to squeeze them into a, a smaller area. Because it's been reduced by the exclusion of hazards and forest blocks and level one, and in my view, level two. I'm, I'm, I'm only coming from the point of view of having as much natural, undisturbed land as possible, which, which going to become more and more important as, as carbon sinks and carbon sequestration values as time goes by. That's where, that's where I'm coming from.
Can I,
So, Michael.
Paul wants to clarify what I said.
Paul?
Um, hang on just one second, folks. My internet's being a little bit slow right now. Can everybody still hear me?
Yeah.
Okay, I had to turn off my cameras here for a second. Um, so, um, just, I, I, you, you sort of chopped in and out for a second there, Michael. So let me just reiterate and say, let's say you had a 10-acre parcel. If your buildable area is two of those 10 acres, and let's say the remaining eight acres are some type of thing that disqualifies it from being the buildable area, then in a straight subdivision, the density remaining would be two acres times the maximum density in that district. So let's say it's the R4, so you would have two acres times four, eight total units available on the leftover, on the, on the two buildable acres. In a conservation PUD, you would be able to transfer the, you, you, you would have to build on no more than 30% of the property. And you would be able to transfer any of the acreage that happened to be forest block, but not a hazard. So let's say, you know, in that same example, 10 acres, let's say, three of it is buildable, so we'll just make the math easy on that 70% conservation. And another two acres was forest blocks with no other hazards. You would then have five acres worth of development that you could put into the three acres.
Got it.
Does that make sense?
Yep.
But I think the clarification is that if there was an intermittent stream or some other level two, you couldn't put a house or a parking lot over that, that piece. You would have to position your development away from those things. So you're still protecting the level twos. It just might be in someone's backyard or side yard or, you know, it could be,
Correct. So Article 12 still controls regardless. It's just a matter of, when I talked with our consultant today about it, she talked about exclusions versus performance standards is the way she described it. So she described the things like the intermittent stream buffer as being a performance standard. You still have to meet it. You have to not build within that area, but it could be incorporated into your lot as opposed to having to draw the lot lines around each of those things. Or if it was, say, those moderately steep slopes, the performance standard isn't necessarily to say that you can't build. It's that you have to meet those engineering specs to make sure that you don't have erosion, that kind of thing.
Right. So Duncan, you, you had a question, did you?
No, Paul brought it up. I mean, Article 12 still protects those level two resources, even if they're part of the buildable, buildable area calculation. You still can't, you can't build on them.
Yes.
That, that was my point.
Right. I mean, it, it depends on what the standard is. If the standard is that you have to engineer, because it's a moderately steep slope, then you have to engineer it in order to build on it. If you don't meet that engineering, then you don't get an approval. If it's a class three wetland, then you don't, and the board doesn't grant any kind of waiver on it, then you can't touch it. And so that's the standards in Article 12 that would direct that, all of that.
Monica?
So that, so going back to that example, and since yesterday we said that there's a lot of detail in this subdivision section and that the PUD section won't be as detailed, because this is the foundation that they're built off of, it, it still seems to me that having some kind of footnote in exactly this section, number two, buildable area and maybe buildable area calculations, some kind of,
Sure, we can, we can do that, Monica. In the, in the area at the beginning of the subdivisions where it speaks about waivers, there's a, there's a box, there's a call-out box that says, if you're thinking about waivers, you really ought to be thinking about being a PUD. So we could do the same thing and say, if you're concerned about your buildable area, you may want to look at being a conservation PUD.
Yeah, okay. Right, because I, okay. And then, and this, this, just connecting the dots, I keep hearing you say, when you give that example, Paul, of the, you gave the, the PUD, you keep referring to it as the conservation PUD. But shouldn't any PUD, PUD enable people to carry that density over? A note to solve for when we get there.
Right. The other PUD types, you've decided to go with a building type based density. So there isn't a transfer over anymore.
Okay.
Right. Had you chosen the other way, then yes, but you chose this way, so it, that, that's no longer relevant.
Okay. Thank you.
So I guess I, I would personally keep the language as written. And then with, you know, an adjustment based on what we decide about the 500-year floodplain, but,
I concur with that.
I would agree with that.
It's like,
Okay, fine, me.
Great. Okay, I think this was a really helpful conversation to really get through that.
Thanks, everyone.
Yeah, are we ready to move on to the master plan discussion? Okay, did it work as yesterday to kind of look through the bullet points in the memo first and then go into the language as a second step? Okay, then maybe, Paul, are you able to pull up the, your memo? Or, or should I do that because you're having troubles?
No, I think I'm good now.
Great.
All right. Um, so as I mentioned yesterday, Michael, I think, had asked the question of the text being a little bit different in that there, there isn't the distinction of italics and non-italics. That's because largely, largely this is pretty new. We're pretty excited about this, this new master plan approach. It really is a, for projects that qualify for it, providing a holistic view of the context of a, of a proposal and laying out at a, at a broad level the, the plan early on. Usually somebody will submit the first phase as a preliminary plat at the same time. So that's where the specificity would come in. And then, as you can probably saw in my notes there, the, the system is set up to essentially reward applicants for providing as much information and detail as they can early in the process. So the more they provide early on, the more they get out of it. Okay.
Well, so one of the first things you have there is the question about the neighborhood meeting. You know, I love the neighborhood meeting for the city center, because we don't really have hearings on all things. But with this master plan, because it goes along with all the hearings for the other reviews, it made me wonder about this, or, or at least the timing of it. Because it has a pretty strict time piece. It says it has to happen within 30 days of the application submission. And like an application submission for a master plan and all this other stuff is pretty big. It made me wonder if we are going to keep it if we let them do it earlier, so they can really like incorporate that feedback. So I, I don't know what other people's thoughts were on it, but, you know, it seems like these things are going to have an awful lot of review at the DRB level as well, so Monica?
Yeah, I remember when there was another project in the works, and I remember Sarah Dot made a really excellent point that seemed very fair. It connects to this, but that if, if, before a plan is submitted and becomes like farther down the path, it seems appropriate that a posted sign, a sign is posted on property before anything definitive happens, that just, that raises the awareness to people who would be concerned about an area before anything is already a plan and farther down the, the line. That would, like, if somebody is planning on, is thinking about making a, a big change to an area, if there's a certain amount of time that they can post that for anyone interested that walks by, that whatever, so they have an opportunity to investigate and maybe make an offer on the property or whatever to, to change that. But that, but simply posting on the property at an earlier point, I think, would be very helpful. And, and personally, in terms of neighborhood meeting, just because I said to Paul, like, define neighborhood. It, to me, I think it, it would seem more fair to be simply all abutting property owners, period. But if you do the combination of the two, where abutting property owners need to be given this ample time, perhaps earlier, I like that, Jessica. And at the same time, have something publicly posted, those two, I think, will cover it. Because if you do abutting properties, it'll be very easy to make sure those people have been contacted, because you know their addresses and you can send them a letter. And then the public post is something that anyone can see and know where to get the information. So that was.
Michael, you have your,
Yes, well, Monica is right, but I think Sarah also, Sarah Dot also suggested or, or asked whether it would be possible to have a sort of early warning list on the city's website of developments that have been brought to the planning department before anything is done about, just so that people can see, oh, this is, this is upcoming. In addition to posting on the property, which might, might or might not be seen by, by interested parties, but people who are interested in, in what developments are going to happen in South Burlington would have a place to go on the city's website to see what's in the pipeline. That was one of her, I think that was her main, the main thrust of her request, as far as notice.
Oh, good, but I thought that you were done, Mike, sorry.
Yeah, no, but yeah, notice should be required and we can go, as Paul mentioned, it's, it's logistically a problem, so we can talk about that later. But that's what I, and I, I, I think that's a good idea, having some place where it's all in one place.
Are you also in favor of having this neighborhood meeting before the process? I didn't quite get that.
Yes, definitely.
Okay, Bernie?
Yeah, so I was just going to suggest for Paul Connor that it might be worthwhile to just, I don't know if there's a typical process that people use. You know, I've heard, you know, Michael and I think Monica say that, that you want to do it early on, and I definitely agree with that. My question is kind of, with respect to posting things on the website, it seems like somebody might need to do like a, some kind of formal submission in order for, because you don't want to be like posting rumors on the website. You know, you want to have some kind of, you know, formal submission from somebody. And at, and at the formal submission stage, then, you know, I think maybe it's in the process. So, so I don't know. I mean, maybe you could just kind of walk through in general how these things kind of come in. I definitely agree that having a neighborhood meeting is a great idea. Having it as early as possible before a bunch of, you know, plans and consultant money gets spent is a good idea. Advanced notification is a good idea. But, you know, making sure that, that we, we understand what your process is for planning, Paul, and that it fits in as early as possible within that process. And maybe, maybe it's before they come in, they have a neighborhood meeting. But then I'm not sure how that relates to, you know, to being able to post it if you haven't gotten anything official yet. So anyway.
Right. So, so we, usually for us, the, the marker of when we're able to sort of announce an application is when it's, when the submission is complete. So sometimes we get pieces of it. Sometimes we get the whole thing. We do a review and make sure that all the elements are there. That's when we assign it a number, and that's when we give it what we call a project description, which is what winds up being on the agenda for the DRB. And what's, it's, for those things to go in the newspaper, it's, it's the description in, in the newspaper. In the form-based code area, that's also what we give the applicant as what they should send out to neighbors as to, here's, here's a description of what your project is. I sort of like some of what I'm hearing from commissioners here in terms of, you know, earlier is better. If, if the goal would be to get feedback even before they're, have submitted a, a complete application, then, then maybe it's something that they demonstrate that they've done and that they've got at least some minimal element of the, you know, they show us that they've at least put together the sort of sketch drawing to, to share with the neighbors. It could be, It could be, you know, it, it could be done in such a way that it says that it's no later than two weeks before the, the DRB meeting, but it could be as early as they want, as long as it's within six months or something.
Yeah.
Right. And then there would be criteria that, you know, they definitely would have to notify all the stakeholders. So you know, abutting property owners and then any other stakeholders that might apply. But I'm not sure then.
Yeah, the notification part is, is, is relatively straightforward because they can, if, if we spell out what needs to be done, then they can sign a certificate of services. Is the term saying we've, 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 we've given it to the following people and we've done the following things. What gets a little bit harder is establishing what, you know, whether they gave them a complete picture of the application. Because if we haven't necessarily seen it yet and determined that it was complete, then we don't, we can't be the gatekeepers of that yet.
Right.
So that's what gets a little tricky.
That's partly on them too, because you know, the, the more information and feedback they get from the neighbors prior to kind of formalizing what they give to you, the less, you know, hassle they may have when they go before the DRB.
Right. And that's the purpose of this whole thing is to try to work through neighbors, work through questions of neighbors before it's in front of a formal process.
But, but let me just also.
Related to that, just, you know, how we, you know, how, how we, we notify, you know, there wouldn't be any mechanism for the city to be able to provide, you know, notification on the website or, or whatever. Early on to address, you know, what Michael and Monica and Sarah Dopp talked about. It would have to be something that would, would come then, you know, from the, the developer through their channels.
Duncan's had it planned out actually for quite a while.
Yeah. Well, quick question for you, Paul, just procedural. What, what's the general timeframe between when you get a complete submission and when they go in front of the DRB?
Generally speaking, we require people to submit an app, application to us about five weeks before the DRB hearing. That gives us a week to determine whether it's complete and assuming that it's complete, then they go on a schedule. And so there, it's about a month out. That gives us enough time to do the notice, do our reviews, get it around to the departments. At busy times, the DRB might be backed up by one or two meetings. So it could be six weeks and instead of four weeks and very occasionally we're past that, but that's, that's pretty rare.
Cause it doesn't seem like the developer and I, I may be wrong here, but I, I would think that they, they wouldn't want to have the neighborhood meeting until the submission was complete. And then get the meeting and then take that information to the DRB. I'm, I'm not sure what other people think on that timeframe.
I have a last question about that.
Sure.
There, there are two things. Duncan, the, the neighborhood meeting is something that would come and when, as Paul said, when the application is complete, but informal notice on, in, in some place that's accessible to the public, because when a developer first approaches Paul, whatever, I, I don't know if that's, that's private, but it's probably public information and you could, you could post a very simple statement or description of developer X wants to build this many units on this, on this parcel. That's it. And go ahead.
I would say, Michael, we could have a conversation at the staff level about what it would take to post information about anything that we've received as soon as we've received it. I, I don't think I'd be comfortable in doing things before they've submitted something with a check and an application because we have a lot of conceptual conversations with people who are just thinking about things. And I think, you know, that they, they expect, they often don't even leave materials with us because they expect to be able to have a just a, a candid conversation before they decide to jump into something.
Prefer to keep it private. I understand that. I'm just worried about the, the four weeks that, that the neighborhood might have to kind of prepare themselves for addressing the DRB when this project comes before the DRB. You know, for, for laypeople, first of all, to get together and then to agree what, what they want to say and what they, what they like and what they don't like. Four weeks is, is tough. Everybody's got a job. Some of us have jobs. But yeah, that's not a long time for them to get organized. And I think that's what, why Sarah made the point of trying to get something, some information out very early on.
Yeah. And this, this actually extends, this neighborhood meeting concept extends that timeline, you know, earlier because it's not part of the current process. Like it, it adds an additional many weeks before an application even comes in. So I think it actually helps. And then there's the multiple kind of steps of, of official public hearings at the DRB level as well. So I mean, from that perspective, Michael, it is actually adding additional time for, for people to really understand a project.
Yeah, I, so, so I think that, I mean, first of all, I think we need to make sure we give people the privacy of exploration and, and having access, they shouldn't be afraid to come and talk to the planning department to just discuss ideas. We need to make sure that they feel that they can have private conversations without it being posted. But also I think that on the other spectrum, the fear with the community is that there's a perception that by the time it, any, anything goes to the DRB, after that point in time, things are kind of locked in. And, and so it's, it's basically just making sure the public understands that they have an opportunity before anything is locked in to still be heard. But at this, I mean, I, I guess it's, oh, I'm sorry. So here was my question for Paul. If you give something the, it's, you accept the proposal or whatever that was, that process. And then you said it's about a month later that this meeting would happen with the DRB. Is the landowner or developer allowed to make changes to that before it goes to the DRB? Or do they have to present to the DRB exactly what they gave you? And if they change it, do they need to inform you? Is that a big process? Like if you, if they, let's say they give you their thing and then they have their neighborhood conversation and they agree like, okay, yeah, you know what? We can work with this a little bit. Do they have to go back to you again and reprocess or?
Can they just explain? Yeah, I'll speak about our current process, which doesn't have the neighborhood meeting. As soon as the four weeks start, we start reviewing it and the review often involves some back and forth. We'll, we'll point out things that aren't quite meeting the rules because completeness doesn't mean approvability. Completeness means they submitted all the things. Buildings might be too tall, so we might get back to them and say, your buildings are too tall or you didn't meet your, you know, you, you, you haven't done a traffic study or whatever it might be. There's, there's a fair amount of back and forth that happens amongst all the departments before it gets to the DRB and oftentimes applicants will make some adjustments. And when the DRB gets their packet, which is about a week before, just like yours, the Wednesday before the meeting. That's generally speaking, the sort of last set of changes. After that, the applicant can bring it to the meeting, but the board will usually continue that because it's brand new stuff. So that's pretty typical. As long as it's consistent with the way that the project is described. That's part of the process to adjust things as they go, whether it's the developer spoke with the neighbors and the neighbors would like to see, you know, a different landscaping next to them or whatever it might be. If it's a wholesale change, then that becomes a different application. That's not common, but it does happen.
Okay, Bernie?
Well, I was just going to say, and you kind of brought it up earlier, Jessica, I, I really do believe that the key is to require that the, the neighborhood meeting occur before the formal submission and that, you know, minutes or whatever of the neighborhood meeting be included with the submission so that, so that the, the neighbors have a chance to provide input before it gets into that, as Monica said, kind of the locked in process. You know, I think, I think that, you know, people should provide input, you know, as soon as, you know, the developer has, and, and again, Paul, you said, you know, maybe it's just a conceptual drawing, but you know, something where they have a meeting and, and get feedback and, you know, have some minutes and include the minutes in with their submission. And how, you know, if there were comments, how they were addressed. And it doesn't mean they have to address all the comments, but you know, somebody asks for a buffer and they decide, you know, that they're not going to do it, you know, then that's right there in the minutes that they submit with their application that, you know, this was suggested, but we're not doing it for the following reason. And all that goes right into the, the beginning application. So I would advocate for having the neighborhood meeting occur before the official submission and that some kind of documentation of that meeting be included with the submission package.
Yeah, and I, I do like that idea of having it be potentially earlier, you know, I just know that like if I got, so as an engineer, if I'm at that meeting and I hear a good suggestion, it might take a few weeks to like redo the plans to incorporate that good idea before it's ready for the actual submission. So I just feel like that 30 days is too close.
I have a, yeah, I, you know what? I think that the piece that seems to be missing and of greatest concern might be, there seems to be phases. There's a conceptual phase and then there's the execution. And to me, this proposed, this, this package that, that Paul is talking about to get to the DRB is really when you're in the details of the execution of it, like we're going to have this many units, here's the layout. But I think that the, what the neighbors may be more concerned about is less that and more a heads up conceptual. I'm thinking about doing this based on the zoning. It's probably going to be a conservation PUD where I'm going to conserve this and I'm going to build over here and, you know, more conceptual. To me, if we, the neighbors have the right, anyone has the right now to sit in DRB meetings. There's plenty of opportunity there to, to be heard on the execution of something. But this, to me, this neighborhood meeting earlier is for a concept to be presented so that a neighbor has an opportunity to actually go and say, hey, I'm so concerned about what you're doing. Can I buy your parcel from you instead? Or, you know, have, have more conceptual conversations going on. Cause we don't want developers to also feel like we're, we're preparing, so we're, we're giving, you know, anti-build groups, more and more opportunity to just cut down building, right? It's, but it's, it's just making sure that those beginning conceptual conversations can happen. And I think that the developer should be able to then, when the basic concept seems to be like, all right, well, generally the concept seems to be okay, then I think it's less about having neighborhood meetings with people that are going to have different perspectives on what something should execute. Like, and they can address that with the DRB. Does that make sense?
I'm Duncan.
Yeah, Paul, I, I, you're not a lawyer, but I'm going to ask you a legal question. Can, can, can we legally, or how, how do you handle requiring somebody to do something before they've even turned anything in? I mean, is that, I mean, we said you were asking them, you've got to have this meeting before you even give us anything?
If, if you choose to make it a requirement, then what it becomes is it is one of the requirements for submit to be considered a complete application. So just like you have to show the, you know, the, the topography and you have to give a narrative and you have to give your traffic study, then you would have to have demonstrated that you've held this meeting.
Alright, so it would be part of.
That's how, that would work.
Okay, alright.
Right, yeah.
So it seems like there's general interest in having the neighborhood meeting, but maybe having it be a little more flexible. So it could be earlier on in the process and be a little more conceptual. So that piece, and then there was a suggestion of having it be the abutting property owners. The draft actually has kind of a larger range of invited people.
This is. Yeah, this is something I was hoping to get some feedback on. Logistically speaking, it's going to be really hard to do the distance thing. It's just not easy data for people to get. I wish that I could say that our grand list and our parcel data spoke to each other in a way that would be really clear, but it's not there. So the idea of letting a wider neighborhood know sounds great, but I'm not sure how to execute it in a way that is reasonable to the applicants.
Could it be a butters get the letter and then are, are we allowed to have another posting as well? Like, do we ever have like front porch forum? I mean, people use that.
Yeah, I, I had made a note that apart from a, a notice in the other paper and the, the required, you're going to, the butters are going to get to know about this eventually anyway, but I, as I take Paul's point that finding all the addresses of the neighborhood, because this is a, this is a neighborhood issue that, that we're talking about. It's not so much the details of the development. Obviously that's important, but how it will affect the neighborhood and how it will differ from what's there already. And that seems to be what we've been hearing from others like Mr. Abrams, for example. So you, you know who the butters are. I call them primary butters, but those primary butters also have a button. So you could widen it by one, by one, one ring, if you like, apart from the, apart from the other paper and, and front porch forum. I know it's difficult to find all the addresses in the neighborhood, although I personally, I, I would not find that very difficult. Because if you look at the, at the digital parcel plan, you can see who, who owns what.
Right. The, the problem with it, Michael, is that because our grand list is not 100% connected to our parcel data. What somebody would have to do is they'd have to look up all the parcels and then physically go to the grand list and write down the address of every single one of them. Which is what they do for a butters now. It's, it's, it's not that it can't be done, but it's labor intensive, very labor intensive.
Yeah, I, I find that to be, I find that to, I find that to be too great a barrier for a conceptual meeting of a landowner. I, I don't think that that's fair to, to require that. We're adding something new, which I think is wonderful. But I, I, my perspective is it's abutting people and if they publicly post visibly on, on their property at the same time, that there's a, like a, a pre-post that they place on their property that says conceptual meeting, conceptual development meeting will be held here. And I, I said to Paul, I don't think that we should require them to do this in person either. I think they should be allowed to do these meetings via what we're doing, Zoom, whatever else. And that can be posted right on the public, public document and, and people share. I mean, the butters that might be upset, neighbors will be passing by. They, then they will see it and have that opportunity to get involved. But I, I think we're by reach, by directly reaching out to too many people, we're just going to be creating so much anxiety and such a hurdle that I think it can be, I don't think it's fair to the landowners or the developers.
Okay, so it seems like having a butters and the other notices seems like a good thing. Okay, anything else on this neighborhood meeting while we were talking about it?
One more question, Jessica, who, who's going to facilitate these neighborhood meetings?
It's actually by the applicant that's supposed to do it. And then they need to provide the meeting attendance list and meeting minutes as part of their submission. So.
And they have to do it within a certain time as soon as they've, as soon as Paul has moved the, listed the application as complete.
Oh, before that.
No, it's before an application. So it's more.
I, I'd love it if it was before.
Yes.
Okay.
Can, can I just say also, I, I don't really agree with, for that early conceptual phase. And I'm, I'm keeping in mind that we're talking about some parcels that might be four acres. I mean, we're not necessarily talking. mean, we're not necessarily talking about one hundred acre parcels here. So I also oppose a pre-conceptual meeting having to be posted, like, in the other paper or anything else. That, it, it seems to me like it's, it, it's the direct people and posting on their property, but, but personally, I don't know that having to post that information and that, like, Zoom number or whatever in the newspaper would be appropriate for that first meeting. That's just my perspective.
Um, why not? You want as many, you want as many of the neighbors as possible to know about it?
So, so the draft does not say specifically that it needs to go into the other paper, but it does say that the city administrative officer would post it and forward it to the city's notice list. So the people who have signed up to hear about these meetings specifically would get the information.
Right.
So like-
Plus the abutters.
Plus the abutters. And I feel like if the, if the sign is posted on the property, and those are very visible, I mean, when you see a, a sign posted on a property, there are people walking by, people driving by, those are very visible. To me, that, that is, that is advertising the potential quite enough.
It sounds like you're right in line with what it says with, yeah.
Yes, except abutters only and allowing, I, I don't think the in-person in a public building should be required. I think online should be safe for people, um, health-wise, but also just safety-wise. People may feel more comfortable, um, attending a meeting like that remotely. I think they'd actually have more attendance if it is a remote meeting.
Okay, that seems reasonable. Paul, is that a change we need to make for the, the ones for the form-based code area as well? Like, how is that being handled right now? Because it does seem like, right, at least currently, it's most comfortable for people to do meetings like this.
Um, right now, as it stands today, I don't think we've had any in the last few months, but we would take the legislative, the legislature's authority that allowed all public meetings to be held remotely under this emergency declaration, uh, we would, we would extend it sort of automatically to be these meetings also, even if they're not technically meetings. It's, it's the spirit of it. So that's what we would do if we had one. We would tell them that, that they could use Zoom temporarily for now.
And, and my comment is just, I think that this is something that now our society has become used to, and I think it should be, for anything that we have in this situation, I think that it should, for the long term, permanently be an option.
All right, well, we're happy to, um, mock something up that, that addresses what we, what I think you all just described there, and you'll get a second bite at this apple.
Great, okay, so moving down the list, anything under the other components there?
So I didn't put it in blue, but I did, well, I guess I put it in blue at the bottom in terms of, um, this, this idea of vesting. So this, this is new. Um, this is something that, because, this is the big carrot associated with the master plan for requiring this whole, um, large process, and it's something that the development community has been really interested in. So, um, what it, what it would do is, um, uh, you saw the section in there that has all the design standards. And so the idea at the, at the master plan level is that you would, uh, if you do a good master plan, what you would do is you would, um, have your, your, your parameters about the amount of development that you're doing and generally where, and then you have all these sections within design standards that you would have the opportunity to say, uh, this is how we're gonna build out the whole project. So using a small example, you might say, for lighting, uh, we're gonna use these antique lights throughout the entire project. In that case, those lights would be approved all the way through the project for future phases, so that they don't ever have to ask the DRB about it again. For other things, like, um, you know, we're going to commit to doing, you know, one of the three following open spaces in each phase at a minimum of X size, then what the DRB would be able to do is to grant that that's been approved conceptually and that they would be allowed to, uh, operate under the rules in effect at the, at the time that they submitted the master plan. So, so they don't have to worry about rules changing later. And if they don't give enough information, the DRB has the authority to say, you know, to either deny the master plan or say, you know, you just never gave us as much information as we needed, so we're not gonna vest this part of the application. So you would be subject to the rules in effect at the time.
Michael, go ahead.
Uh, if, if some element of this, uh, project is vested, um, can they change, can the, can the developer change it subsequently?
Um, they, they and the city are bound to it. So if they try, if they, if it's something small, then they could change it, but then they'd be subject to the rules in effect at the afterwards. If it was something significant, uh, everybody is bound to it, so they'd have to do a master plan amendment to it. That, that's the, um, we're bound to it as the city, they're bound to it as the applicant. So if they committed to saying, "We're doing three acres of open space in Phase Three," and then they come back and they say, "We only wanna do one acre," they've been bound to that. That's their, that's their approval. It's, they got the approval for the development because they gave that open space, for example.
Mm-hmm.
So it would be, it would be a, a brand-new master plan, and they would not have the vesting associated with anything like that.
Okay, Monica?
So my comment, we, I love it, I, I like the whole idea, but the ten-year duration, and when I think about environmental, um, and new technologies that we learn, is there a way to at least say, going back to your light example, we, we want these lights, and just say, "You can continue to use those for the next ten years as long as you're also keeping up with any advancements that would make them better." Like, so if, if they have to change-
I mean, I guess, I guess in that example, I was thinking of a design, not necessarily a, um, like a style, not necessarily a technology. So if, you know, LEDs are the next iteration of what that is, comes around, then they'd still be able to do the newer technology. It's the design part of it that's relevant. It would still need to look like an antique lamp post, um, but it could use newer technology in it.
But if the newer technology was so different and so much better that lamp posts weren't even needed anymore, it would be a shame for them to have to put them in.
Yeah.
If, if the flying orbs that were-
Right. There is, there is some ability to modify things within a master plan as long as it's not significantly altering it. Um, you know, I, I wouldn't wanna be in a, in a place where that's a blanket thing, where, you know, we say, "Oh, well, people don't like being outdoors anymore, so we're not gonna do open spaces." You know, that's, that's a completely different, uh, kettle of fish. So I, I think it does allow for some modification over time to, to deal with new technologies, but they are also walking into, um, some level of, of commitment, which is what, um, you know, I think we've been hearing from you guys and from the DRB and, and residents, that, that there'd be some mutual commitment, um.
Well, here, here's another, here's another example, Paul. Like, what if, like, we, the state recently had the whole change with composting, and now everyone has to compost, and what if, in a handful of, couple of years, people figure out, actually, if we have a neighborhood composting section, it reduces the, this and this and that, and so then we decide, okay, we want every ma- every neighborhood to have a neighborhood composting area.
I would say that likely things like that, Monica, would be not at the level of the master plan. Um, it would be easily able to be incorporated into whatever phase that they're actually getting an approval for. Remember, this is just the master plan.
Okay.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think we wanna be so prescript, too prescriptive to him, him in the developer, uh, and, and, um, limit his architectural innovation, if you like, at, at this point, because something better might come up in the future. If it's that much more better and more efficient and, and saves power, maybe they'll do it anyway. But trying to, trying to tie it in at this early stage, uh, I think is a bit, a, a bit overboard.
Right. Well, and that's why this is incentive-based in here, to say, for things that a developer is comfortable in committing to, that they can get more approval for it, or potentially a full approval, for things that they're ready to give a design palette to, they can be vested, and if they're not ready for it, that's okay too. But then we're, the city is also not committing if they're not ready to it.
So Paul, I just wanna go back to something I think I heard you said earlier. So these design standards, the list of things here is, is pretty extensive and pretty detailed, and, like you said, like, maybe a applicant isn't ready to commit to landscaping and screening specifications. So if they chose not to submit landscaping and screening specifications, is there any grounds for the DRB denying their application and requiring that that's, that that's given? Um, because it, it feels like something, like a loop, that we don't need them to jump through at this point, but, um.
Right. Um, that's a great question, and, and it's something that staff has talked with the consultants about, of whether there might be a way to parse these out into the must-haves and the, um, could-dos. So the things that, that absolutely must be shown to the DRB and the things that, you know, um, if you choose to not make a commitment on your lighting or your landscaping, then that's okay. Whereas if you aren't ready to make a commitment at all on where you're gonna generally put your open space, that's not acceptable. You need to at least give us a conceptual level at the master plan.
And, and that-
So we can work on that a little more.
Yeah, and that's what I'm getting at. Like, it feels like some things are very important, like open space, open space type buildings, where the buildings are gonna go, where the roads are gonna go. Some of that stuff feels really pretty important, but some of these other things feels like, you know, the lighting plan, like, a lighting plan is so detailed, like, and, you know, if they want that vested, maybe that's okay to submit, but I wouldn't want somebody to be denied because they don't provide that.
We'll work on that. That's great feedback, and that's, um, the same question we had. So I'm glad that we're hearing the same thing.
Monica?
Yeah, can I, so you just, uh, sparked an idea that back, just briefly back to our last conversation about the neighborhood thing, I kind of feel something similar there, which is, at that conceptual level, can you think about what are the most important conceptual pieces that somebody should have to share with the neighbors? They, they shouldn't have to share lighting plan, and I know that's an, a, a extreme, but what, what should, what conceptually is the most important thing? What are the five things they should have to tell the neighbors? That, that kind of thinking for that could be very helpful as well.
Really good point.
That's, um, that might be well laid out in, in Item One, where the project description in this, sort of got one, two, three, four, six bullet points, but they're pretty, um, there, there might be what, exactly what, what should be disclosed at that early point, uh, for, for a meeting, for a neighborhood meeting. It says that, you know, a map and narrative accompanying tables, overall vision and scope, land area and properties to be included, current property ownership, current zoning, um, that's probably all we need. Those four items that are in fifteen B oh four one.
I almost wonder if, you know, I think, I think you've got a great idea there, Michael. Um, I, it doesn't, like, specifically say, like, road connections need to be shown in areas where buildings are gonna be, need to be shown. I, I wonder if that's more like what Monica was suggesting. It's almost like a development plan, and maybe it doesn't need to be that detailed, but, um, like, I would, I'm sure that road connections and, and areas that are gonna have buildings on them would be on the plan, so.
I think we were thinking that it would be things sort of along the lines of, on Page Two, uh, fifteen oh three, uh, pre-application sketch plan. So sketch plan is generally sort of a one-page sheet that shows all, all the major things that Michael laid out, and it's, it's, it's in our regulations. Um, let me take a look at exactly that and sort of meld what Michael had to say and, and what you all just said. Um, because I, I think, I think we understand what you're, what you're thinking of here.
Yep.
Um.
Good point. And that's kind of what Monica was saying earlier. We wanna make sure that they're showing, um, an appropriate thing for them to comment on.
Um, one question while I'm looking at this section. Um, the way that the process is currently laid out is there's, there would be the neighborhood meeting, and then a sketch plan, and then the actual application. Do you feel strongly about the timing between the sketch plan and this neighborhood meeting, if they're sort of in the general same timeframe? Because that's, that's what the sketch plan is also supposed to be, is the first look for the DRB before there's any commitments.
Yeah, that's a bit late.
As long as it's before the, this sketch plan submission to you guys, so that, you know, that it's part of the package.
So you want it bef- okay, so you'd like to have it completed before they submit the sketch plan submission? So that's, that would be a month before-
I mean, they can develop the sketch plan and have the neighborhood meeting and then submit, you know, to you guys. But again, with the concept earlier is better. It would be nice to get neighborhood impact, input on the sketch plan, so that if they wanted to tweak it before it went in, that would be a good thing.
Be, could be the neighborhood discussion.
So just laying this out, um, somebody would, um, organize and advertise and then host a neighborhood meeting. Uh, then sometime thereafter, they would submit the sketch plan application to us. Uh, five weeks after that, it would go to the DRB. After they're done with the sketch plan, they would then prepare the master plan, which could be sometime in the next six months.
Mm-hmm.
And whenever they submit it, then it's five weeks again until the DRB hears it. Is that, is that sort of what your, how you wanna lay this out?
Yeah, I mean, that sounds good to me, because that gets input, you know, that addresses the concern about getting input as early on as possible, and it gives them an opportunity to tweak the sketch plan. It lets the neighbors know that there's stuff going on, you know, and then it gets it into the process. And once it's in the process, you know, and this, and the sketch plan goes through the DRB review, and then the master plan review, then, you know, people have already been well-informed by that point.
Mm-hmm. Duncan?
Good question. Um, by my, per, per what I think Monica said, are, are we gonna give the applicant direction on what they should be expected to provide in the neighborhood meeting in terms of major infrastructure, that sort of thing?
Uh, yes. So it sounds like you wanna have it mostly be things that would be basically in the sketch plan, the one-pager plus, um, plus any descriptions. Um, I think that the way that you've just described it to me, we'd wanna be, um, any, any applicant who's doing a lot of homework in prep, in preparation for this will have a lot more than that already done, frankly. Um, by the time that they wanna share it with the public, they've, they've thought through a lot, a lot of pieces of it, just because they, they wanna be able to answer questions from the public, they wanna know if it's feasible. Um, I think what we'd wanna be able to do is be clear to them that they can modify it as much as they want, uh, before the sketch plan, based on that feedback. That they don't, that they don't have to go back and do another neighborhood meeting if the feedback is, you know, move the big buildings over to this side and the small buildings over to this side, and then if they go and do that, then that's, um, I, we don't wanna be in sort of a gatekeeper job associated with that.
Yeah.
Right, exactly.
And on that note also, can we make sure that we provide, that the landowner is provided with what their rights are in this too? I mean, uh, first of all, going into the neighborhood meeting, they should be able to provide clarity, um, on what the current regulations say they can do. You know, what, what, they should be able to, um, and they may not know how to communicate that too. I'm just, again, thinking about smaller, the, the four, the five acres. Um, do they, do they fully understand what's alr- the regulations already say that they can do? And, and here's that list, so that neighbors would, can be informed by that. And secondly, what happens if they go and every single neighbor says, "Don't do this," but they need to understand, what, what do they do with that information? They can still then proceed, they just have to say, "Well, they said, 'Nobody wants me to do this, but it's my right, and so I'm gonna pursue it.'" So I guess it's just, what, what happens, um, setting, uh, uh, understanding what a negative outcome from a neighborhood meeting means?
Right, right. And that's, that's the, I'd say that that's the one downfall of a neighborhood meeting that is not in front of the DRB. Right. And that's that's the, I'd say that that's the one downfall of a neighborhood meeting that is not in front of the DRB. Um, you know, it does allow for much more free flowing conversation back and forth. It's not adjudicated by anybody. The one drawback is that when it's in front of the DRB, the DRB or staff can say, you know, these are, this is the rules. Uh, if everybody says that they don't like a project, then, you know, I guess an applicant can say um, that's great feedback and, you know, we'll have to decide whether we're going to move forward. If we move forward, then you know, it will have to comply with the rules at that time.
Well, and really, that's a key thing too, is that is that, you know, if you're a developer and you have a really contentious neighborhood meeting. Um, you know, if nothing else, they they know what's coming when they when they go in formally. And, you know, they have a chance to maybe address some of that or, you know, even if they're not going to address it, at least they know, you know, what the tenor of the public is going to be when they come in. And you know, that's, you know, worth it. Because it may inform their decision-making process on whether to proceed or whether to tweak it or not. And you know, quite frankly, if they decide to proceed and they don't tweak it at all, well, they kind of know what's coming at that point.
Well, in in addition to that, the DRB will also see what what the neighborhoods, uh, the neighbors said and what they liked and what they didn't like and uh, and the reasons why. But so, you know, at least we've the neighborhood has had an opportunity to express itself and the DRB will know what those views are because they'll see the minutes.
Monica. Place where this gets a little bit tricky is where neighbors and applicants both don't especially like something, but the rules say it must be done in a certain way. You know, that's that's where, you know, a neighborhood meeting can, you know, everybody can say, you know, we all we don't like this either, but the city said we want to have north-south roads to have energy efficiency and you know, we can both go and tell the DRB that we don't like it, but those are the rules.
So I'm almost wondering if this if this neighborhood meeting can actually be completely paperwork, i- is there like more of a questionnaire that the developer, the landowner can fill out that answers questions and then that is what is publicly posted and
I would say more often than not, really, the purpose of the neighborhood meeting is to have an introduction to the neighborhood and really try to work through issues. That's the real value of it.
Yeah, we had someone come, there was a developer, and I don't know exactly which property at this point, but like over on Shelburne Road who did this neighborhood meeting. And they, both sides found it very, very helpful. There were a few things that they were able to, you know, hear from the neighbors and they were like, oh, that's a good idea. And they did it. And, you know, it was right there on the plan. Uh, I'm sure there were some things that both sides didn't agree on, but you know, just by giving people that voice, it's it can can kind of collectively come up with some tweaks or additions and having people just feel like they're part of the process before it's so legal feeling at the DRB. So I do think that having like at least seeing someone's face and, you know, before it's somebody in a suit in front of the DRB, I think is just really helpful.
And do you know where I think I'm getting stuck is more in like infill type scenarios, which maybe I shouldn't be thinking of.
The one I'm talking about was actually infill, like it was was relatively small and completely surrounded by existing development.
Okay.
Uh, I have a question, Paul. Do you, does a sketch plan come to you before it goes to the DRB?
Yes, so that that that's one of those five week, uh, they they submit, then they get scheduled.
So it's reasonable to assume that the developer will have a sketch plan, uh, which could well be the basis for the discussion with the neighbors before they send it to you.
Yeah, we're
Yeah, I mean.
That's going to have all the information that they need.
Right, well, you're you're basically, by doing what you described, you're you're making them have that information. Basically, as soon as they're ready with the sketch plan, they would then have the neighborhood meeting. Today, as soon as they're ready with the sketch plan, they would schedule, they would submit it to us. So it it might back them up a few weeks.
Understood.
Um, on the other hand, again, this is for master plan and master plan projects are typically pretty big projects where they, you know, they have, this is typically months and months in the making before that time. So the these aren't the sort of, you know, three, a three-family dwelling being built. This is a, you know, this is multiple acres of of project.
Right.
Um, other questions on the master plan or, um, I think we may have made it through all the bullets. Um, so we can extend our discussion down to specific text if anyone has anything. Monica?
Yeah, I had something in the poll in the findings, which is fifteen B oh five review standards. And in A, it says findings for master plan approval, the DRB must find that. And my comment was that in the, um, section three, the proposed development plan demonstrates, um, you know, that these things have happened and it's A through F. And what it doesn't list there specifically, and this is, I just don't know if when in the time this is supposed to happen. Uh, I'm going to just look at E as an example, that it avoids or minimizes and mitigates adverse impacts on adjoining properties. But what I'm not seeing is a statement like that that proves that the landowner, you know, if they had to do a field assessment or, you know, verifying whether there are wetlands or, you know, a- any of the natural resource protection stuff. Um, I'm not seeing a bullet here that very specifically
B as in boy?
Yeah.
Yeah, does B do that?
B does do that.
And that, so that would, that would include having already done the those field assessments.
Um, so at at the master plan level and at the sketch plan level, you would need to have done the desktop version of it. So you need to go to the agency, the uh, A and R Atlas. Um, typically people map out their wetlands because it's significant enough that they want to do it, but it's at the later stages of review where you have to go and actually do all of your field verifications.
Okay. All right, that's
But you do have to submit all the desktop level information. So
Okay.
You know, the river corridors, the wetlands as we know them. All the information that it's readily available through computer mapping.
Okay, thanks.
Yeah, and it's all listed specifically in the chapter twelve, like at what level, which which information gets submitted.
Okay. And I did have a
Go ahead.
Chapter twelve question kind of relating to this, but I don't know if it's too confusing for me to bring it up now.
I think we should, let's do what Jessica suggested and start going through the text.
Yeah. Okay, so Monica, something from the text. Anyone else have anything from the text? Um, Michael, you're on mute right now.
Um, there was a question about using, um, this master plan tool in the in the form-based code district.
Um, yes.
A, sorry, um, fifteen oh two A one.
Yes.
And I'd made a note that, um, if it's, if it's possible, why not include it here? It makes, it would make sense to be consistent. Unless there's, unless there's some reason why it can't be done, can't be used in the in the form-based code district.
I think that we're thinking and the the property owners in city center would like to have some kind of an ability to have a master plan also to deal with some of the issues. Um, the, my only hesitancy is, I'm not sure that because the formulation of the code is so much different, whether we're, whether it's just an easy drop-in or if it's something that we uh, set the objective to get done in the next few months. I just don't want to slow down all this work. In order to get it done, but it, but if commissions are are in agreement that it's something we should work towards, then we'll start putting our heads on it.
Is there anything in the current regulation for the form-based code district that precludes them from submitting a master plan?
They are not allowed to be a PUD. I don't know. I'd have to look at that, Bernie. It was intended to be, remember, the form-based code is intended to be almost entirely administrative. Only the subdivision part goes to the DRB. So I'd have to think about that a little bit. Typically, a master plan or as it's called in a form-based code or regulating plan allows, the purpose of it is to allow for some big level stuff to be both settled and also moved around so that somebody could um, say, you know, you have X amount of T five over here and T four over here. I'd actually like to move them. Um, so we we, I think that that's something that we might want to build into it if we did that. Um, because that's, that's really how that's supposed to work in a form-based code is to let somebody come up with a new idea beyond what we've already thought of in the city.
So you had also suggested, Paul, that maybe the form-based code subcommittee could could work on this rather than our spinning our wheels here now.
Yeah, I guess, as I said, my my primary concern is I, um, I don't, I I know how much you all want to get this project done. And I don't want it to slow up by another couple of months while we try to figure out how we sew it into a form-based code when things are working reasonably well there.
Yeah, this seems like something to flag for later that we want to kind of come back to, but not hold us up now.
I think we started to talk about it a little bit before we stopped meeting. Am I correct, Paul?
Yes, that's that's kind of where this idea comes from. Yeah.
Yeah, we we did start to have some conversations about it, but we didn't get very far on it.
Yeah, but I guess, you know, back to my original question. I mean, if somebody wanted to put together a master plan for part of the form-based code district and, you know, the master plan was, you know, in compliance with the form-based code requirements, but they were, you know, just trying to show us how things were going to be laid out. Um, you know, we wouldn't, um, there's nothing that would preclude them from doing that.
Maybe not. Let me, let me think about that, Bernie. That might be, it might be possible to just do that.
And and I think that comes up in line fifteen there because we're actually saying that they can't do it in the form-based code district. So I think, I think maybe that would be the change.
Right. Okay, let me think on that.
To my knowledge, PUDs, TDRs and, uh, master plans don't exist in the form-based code world.
Okay, any other notes or items people want to discuss? Yeah, I I think I mentioned all the items I had written down or came up already. Any other, I mean, I know, any other things that Paul Connor, you had that you really wanted to make sure you got feedback on specifically?
Um, not on the master plan or subdivision. I think we're in pretty good shape. I had a preliminary meeting this afternoon to just brief our consultant on what you all talked about last night. Um, and we'll follow up later in the week. I, um, it was just a quick conversation to to update her. So we'll, um, we'll proceed. I think we're in pretty good shape with this.
Okay, before we move on, I just want to make sure we didn't miss anything from the public. We've been having a pretty commission-centric um, conversation. So if anyone from the public also had comments on this, this would be a good time. And you could turn your camera on or wave or speak up or chat, so. And I'm not hearing anything. So I guess we can actually move on to the next item on the agenda, which is the recap and review of environmental protection standards and PUD applicability. Paul, we had some questions last time we were talking.
Yeah, so, um, I had a couple of quick status updates and then a discussion. Um, I did just today get back or yesterday, I guess, get the, um, natural resource mapping that you asked for last week. Um, so we have that. And if you want, I can show it to you right now, or we can just put it into a map um, and send it out to you. Um, and then mostly I wanted to focus on, um, are what we, uh, what we found out around the five-hundred-year floodplain. Um, because that was sort of the last major outstanding question, I think. So would you like to start with that one?
Sounds great.
Okay, so just give me one second here. I think I showed you this map before um, of the extent of the five-hundred-year floodplain. Just give me a second here. Uh, so the pink in here are your various hazards. The orange is the one-hundred-year floodplain and the blue is the five-hundred-year floodplain. Um, there are places where obviously the blue and the other hazards overlap, so you might have a wetland or a stream, something like that. Um, I had some conversations added as to Jessica with the state floodplain coordinator. Um, they were not aware of any municipalities in Vermont that have decided to more strongly regulate the five-hundred-year floodplain as as though it were the one-hundred-year. Um, they were intrigued by the idea, though. Um, we talked about ways in which it could be done. They had indicated that one way that at least one town has thought about it was to basically require higher um, uh, buildings be be flood-proofed even more um, within the one-hundred-year to accommodate for bigger storms. But they didn't feel that that was really much of a solution because realistically, the five-hundred-year floodplain is a different physical area, especially in South Burlington where the streams, it's further up the stream that there's flooding. Um, so following that, I had a conversation with folks at the Chitting County Regional Planning Commission who have been helping various towns to, um, to to deal with floodplain issues. And they had a couple of good ideas that I wanted to share with you. They started with asking, you know, what are our current regulations? So we we basically have three water-based types of regulations in the city. One is, um, our stream setbacks, um, you know, stream buffer of fifty feet from the top of the bank. The purpose of that is to preserve the ecology and to preserve the stream. The second one is the one-hundred-year floodplain. And the purpose of the hundred-year floodplain is to protect the flood value, the flooding, um, uh, protect property essentially from being flooded out and being, uh, being damaged. That's that's ultimately its purpose. And then the third one is the river corridors and its purpose, and Jessica, correct me if I'm getting any of this wrong. Its purpose is to make sure that the free flow of a stream, uh, is able to meander and that buildings don't obstruct that. And so
I think there's a recognition that all three of those values are overlapping because they're really overlapping area. So, but you are right. Those are the main reasons why those three areas are identified separately.
Right. Um, so then the next level of our conversation with the regional planning commission was what are the circumstances in South Burlington and what are the commission's objectives? So I heard that your objective in areas where there's greenfields, where there is no development, is to not see building in those areas, is to leave them in a natural state, which would essentially be the equivalent of saying that the stream buffer should be larger. And then the outstanding question that we hadn't really gotten to as a commission was, what is your objective in the areas where there is already development? So up at the top of the screen here, for example, I'll just zoom in. This is the Ethan Allen Industrial Park. Yeah, those little buildings, all those little gray areas are buildings in behind it. So that's a built-out area. Um, similarly, uh, you can see, uh, you've got a little tongue here going through parts of the uh, um, Chamberlain neighborhood, um, in people's backyards. There's the same thing in the Butler Farms neighborhood. So the question, I guess, to you is what's your objective where it's not a greenfield? Is it something more like a floodplain where you're trying to make sure that new development is flood-proofed? Or is it to prohibit future development? Even if it might be a parking lot today?
I think in, in areas where there is development, for, for example, one of the floodplains goes right through the middle of Dorset Village. And the other one is, goes through the, I think, the golf course and then down pa- parallel to Dorset Street south. So where there is development, then I think new development has to be more resilient. Where there's no development, expand the, the buffer zone to coincide with the, with the boundary of the 500-year floodplain.
Yeah, I think, yeah, that's a great idea. And Monica?
I was going to say, NPR had a wonderful segment on this. I don't know if a, a planning commission has this ability, but where there is already development, it is at minimum ensuring that those homeowners and future buyers are aware that that property is within that range. Because then they will have the, they will have the information so that if they choose to upgrade their home in whatever way, they can do it in a way that's more resilient, if knowing, so at least giving them the information.
Yeah, I, I really like what the, you know, the approach that the RPC and then Michael just kind of agreed with, the idea that if it's a, an undeveloped spot, like, I don't think we should have new homes or new development put there because a larger storm could come and, and hurt that property. And we want to kind of preserve the ecological value of having it be a, a working floodplain. So it seems like our buffer language in chapter 12 does that. So if in those areas we expanded our buffer to kind of be the edge of the 500-year floodplain, we could have, like, get that objective. And then in the areas where it's a neighborhood, I think the idea is that we would do something similar to how we're treating the 100-year floodplain by having, you know, new development or, or an expansion or porches or, or sheds. You know, those kinds of things kind of adhere to something similar to our 100-year floodplain regulation. So, so nothing's getting worse. And anything new is more resilient. So and I, I think Paul, you had some ideas as to like kind of exactly how to kind of do that.
Yeah, so Jessica, just building on what you said, one small correct clarification, in South Burlington, we're sort of pretty fortunate. There's, that there's almost nothing built within our 100-year floodplain. So we don't really allow for any significant development at all in it. Many communities that are built where there are floodplains have sort of an additional subsection of how to build in a flood-resilient way. You know, you build one foot or two feet above the flood elevation. If you wanted to allow for development and redevelopment, the way to do that, let's say in the Ethan Allen Industrial Park, would be to, would be to write that section in and have it applied to the 500-year. So I think the only tricky thing in doing all this would be because it's not a one-size-fits-all, you would have to map which ones, which ones are subject to which rules. You know, is this blue area, you know, which, which ones are subject to which set of rules? Because they are two different sets of objectives. I think it's doable. We just would need to physically do it and then, you know, be really clear as for applicants in the future, especially in the stream buffer one, to know that it's top of bank, top of slope, or the 500-year in these instances. And that's, we just have to figure out how to make that really clear and obvious to people and to our own staff so that we don't miss examples.
Can I ask a question about environmental impact? With the 500, let's just take an area where there is already development, the industrial area. Can you?
Yeah.
So there's, like, in the, in the areas where nothing has been developed yet, I can, I understand very much support keeping that area safe. In an area like this, there's both looking out for the environment, but there's also just making sure that those businesses at least understand the risk before they make an investment. But, but maybe that's enough. You know, that, that maybe if it's already an established area where there are businesses that, you know, may need to expand a garage to keep their business going. I guess, would, would a are there, are there suggested enhancements that we would put in place, but if it makes it impossible for them to financially afford that, for them to at least understand the risk? If they don't, is that, is that a fair way to put that?
Well, I think there's two things, Monica. So, and, and I think Bernie wants to speak to this too, but the idea is that instead of building the, the garage floor level with the ground around it, they would need to fill underneath it to bring that floor higher and have like a ramp that goes up to it a little bit. So that when that area floods in the future, their, their garage is above the flood elevation. So it's not, it's, it's protecting their investment. And, and, you know, as a community, it's us saying it's important for additional investments to be protected. And with climate change and the trends in flooding, it's not a, an if it floods, it's a when.
And, and the example you just gave doesn't sound like a big cost, cost issue. I mean, it will add some expense in doing that, but it's not like we're saying, you know, you must have a grid.
Yeah, and I, I think for me, it, it makes sense to get the language and, you know, really have us look at it because it's, it's really quite reasonable, you know, and there's thresholds, like the, the typical FEMA language has thresholds. So like, if you're only doing like a, a very tiny thing, you, you can just kind of do it however you wanted to do it essentially. Versus if you're doing, I think one of the thresholds is 25%. So if you're investing in your property more than 25% of the value, then you have to meet the higher standard for the new section. So, so it has to do with kind of the investment as well. Bernie, did you want to add to that?
No, I think you pretty much nailed it. That was the part that I was going to say or ask is, is that, you know, if they're modifying beyond a certain percent, then they automatically have to, you know, meet a higher standard for resiliency. So, and you pretty much nailed that. So thank you.
Yeah. Michael?
Are we assuming that the, the businesses in the Ethan Allen Industrial Park do not know that they're in a floodplain?
They should. You know, it's actually part of all, like, during property transfers and things, FEMA maps are checked. Like, it's part of the legal piece of property transfer to look at those floodzone maps.
Do they have to know the 500-year, Jessica?
I don't know. I mean, it's a good
I'm not sure that 500 has to be noted. I know the 100 does. I'm, I'm not certain whether 500. So Michael, I, I don't know the answer to that question.
They should. And if we put it on a map in our, in our rules, they should see it. So.
Yeah, anything that we can do is that, anything that the planning commission can do to ensure that people at least know that, I think we should try to do.
Can I ask you a quick question?
Yeah.
The, the, the 25% you just mentioned, what, what is that regulation? Is that a federal regulation for building in floodplains? Or where does that come from?
Well, so there's, each community gets to choose what their regulations are. You know, we actually have regulations for our 100-year floodplain. The, the state has come up with different kind of draft templates for, for different communities to kind of pick and choose and help guide what their language is. And like Paul said, like, we don't have it in ours right now, but there is like a template available from the state that, that kind of lays out that suggested language for, you know, that more resilient development in those areas. So it's, it's not, federal has like some general guidelines, but it's, it can leave it up to the community for the specifics.
Quick question about flood insurance. When I lived in Texas, people who were in or very close to a floodplain had to buy flood insurance from a federal agency. Is there, is there any requirement for that here for, for homeowners or businesses that are in a floodplain?
Michael, it's my understanding that it's generally tied to mortgages. So the mortgage lenders won't issue mortgages to people who are in a floodplain without flood insurance. That winds up being, as I understand it, that's the way it, it's, it's captured.
Okay. And the, the last thing is, I'm afraid I have to bail out because I have another session to go to. Have we got a lot to cover yet?
I don't think so. I was going to talk a little bit about Jessica's presentation on Monday and give a status report, but I can send that to you in writing, Michael.
Thank you, Paul.
And we will still the quorum so we can continue with meeting as planned. Do people generally like that approach with the 500-year?
Yes.
Yes.
I, I like it, but I, I would ask that being a business owner, very conscious of finding out about stuff that's going to cost you more money not knowing about it, that we somehow, I don't know if there's a way that we can communicate with this, the folks in this business park. Because I'm willing to bet not all of them may be aware or may have forgotten they're in a floodplain. So I, I don't know, is there some way that we can make sure they're aware of what's, maybe what's coming down the pipe with some regulations there?
I, I think that's a good idea. In, in particular sense, what we're talking about is essentially, you know, if you're going to modify your building, you're going to have to do some additional stuff. It would be good for them to not be surprised by that.
Yes.
Although it certainly, I mean, that's what we want them to do and, and it makes sense. And ultimately, it, you know, ironically, it saves them money in the long term because, you know, when you have your 500-year flood, which I think everybody agrees is going to occur more frequently, if, if they've, you know, spent money to, you know, redo their building and they build resiliency into it, then it's not going to be damaged to the extent that it would be damaged if they didn't do that. And ultimately, it's, you know, it's going to save them money in the long run. But, you know, as a business owner, you know, they may or may not see it that way in the, in the short term. So I definitely think letting them know that we're making this change and that, you know, it may cost them in terms of, you know, resiliency features when they modify a building would be good for them to know.
Jessica, do you happen to know how floodplain rules deal with, with underground? Because I'm looking here to where the rotisserie is at the corner of Williston Road and, and Heinsberg Road. And I think that that section of Potash Brook is actually underground.
Yeah.
Gracie's.
It probably isn't going to stay underground in a 500-year flood. And that's why it's plotted the way it is. If the modeling showed that the water would stay underground the whole way, it would just be like the width of the pipe in a straight line, right over top of the pipe. Like, you see that in bridges sometimes where it like necks down and squeezes under the bridge and then comes back out. So that's typically how it's drawn.
Okay. Okay, we'll work on that.
Great. Anything else with that item? Or the whole recap and review?
I had a, a, a question about some of the other maps not pertaining to this. Is that okay to bring up now?
Sure.
So I noticed, Paul, I went back to the article 12. And it looks like you maybe uploaded some new mapping in the draft article 12 with the habitat blocks and connectors. Is that new?
Maybe. Are you talking about the the thing that we looked at a couple of weeks ago? That the, that's the, the map, that like the story map that went through all the different zooming areas?
No, no, this is a, it looks like we'll be prepared for a, an L, LDR. I mean, it's in the back that has legends. But anyway, I, I was preparing for this meeting, looking at that. And I, I real, at, at what point are we going to be able to look at our map that we discussed with the habitat blocks in that prior meeting? From a, a more bird's eye view? Because I'm, there's a whole, there's a whole connector that I'm realizing is lacking. And I was wondering when we'd have the opportunity to have that kind of discussion. There's a, there's a big connector.
To like relook at it with our edits.
That with our edits. Yeah, I kind of thought that's what we were doing today. And I'm realizing that's not what we're doing.
I think we're pretty close to that, Monica. I, as I said, I just yesterday got the updated information. So this here, for example, shows the, in dark green, the new forest habitat blocks and in orange, the areas that are removed. I was in the process of uploading that or, or synthes- synthesizing that just before this meeting. So I didn't get the connectors in yet. But we're, we're, we're getting pretty close. So I think at, you know, I'll talk with Jessica, but in as early as your next regular meeting, we could be reviewing all this stuff together now.
Okay, so while you have that map up, do you want me to point out the one I'm talking about or should I just not?
Uh, I don't know. I don't think I've got the connectors in here. So maybe just let me know offline and I'll, I'll make sure.
Okay, no, I don't think it is mapped anywhere is my point. I think we need, I think that we should, I think we should add one, but we, I can tell you offline and then we can discuss it next time.
Makes sense to talk about when we have all of it in front of us.
Okay.
With the changes we talked about. Anything else, Paul?
I think that that's largely it. So my big homework here is to take what you've done, obviously clean up the subdivision and master plan language, but my next task will be to go back into article 12 and make the edits that you asked for back in, I guess, end of August, beginning of September, and then incorporate all the cross discussions that you talked about here. I, I didn't, I decided not to go back and try to change that until you were done with this. So that's the next piece. To start to sew this all together.
I actually do have another question.
Sure.
All right. So in the agenda, it says that we were going to discuss the environmental protection standards and the PUD applicability. And at what point can we talk about? If we, even if we go to build type, I'd like to have a, 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 get people's perspective on in what circumstances can a PUD go even further in density than the underlying zoning? Or does the build type? Can the build type help us with that? That's where I thought when we're tying in the standards and the PUD applicability, I just wanted to know when we can have that conversation.
I guess what I'd suggest, Monica, is maybe I'd be happy to have sort of a one-on-one with you to start with, to, to sort of reset where we're, where the draft is at. And then if you'd like, we can certainly plan for that to be a, a commission discussion as well. Because, because I, I think that a lot of that is, is in there now. But, you know, we need to, we need to be able to communicate it effectively to everybody because I know there's been a lot of pieces of the puzzle here.
Okay, so do you want me to contact you to try to regurgitate everything in my brain and then you can make sense of it? Okay, so do you want me to contact you to try to regurgitate everything in my brain and then you can make sense of it?
Yeah, and it might help you a little bit if we do this next scheduling item. Cause I think, Paul, you were gonna give us an update on kind of how things are gonna fit together here.
Yeah, um, so hang on one second. All right. Uh, so these are basically the remaining pieces of the puzzle to complete. The first, the, 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 the last major thing that you haven't seen is the actual language for PUDs. Uh, Sharon is uh to get that to me by November 15th. And then I'll bring it to you as soon as I can, uh, after we've had a chance to, to look through it and, and vet it with her. Then, you know, that's where you will have the opportunity to really sort of dig into all of these pieces. Uh, the conservation PUDs that you were speaking about, both sort of the, the general version of it, but also the version where it's uh, you know, do you want to allow for some large lots or things like that? Um, and then it'll be the opportunity to also test out the building types and the densities and all that stuff. Um, you, I showed you a sketchy map um of where the PUD types would apply. Uh, so we're gonna make that into something that's a lot neater and bring it back to you. Um, we talked about article 12. The uh, TDRs is another piece of the puzzle that I need to sort out. There's two parts to that. One is what to do within the southeast quadrant, which I know you gave me some feedback on a few weeks ago. And I need to um, give you a couple of ways to think about doing that. And then what are you gonna do outside of the southeast quadrant? And then the rest of it is really cleaning up the rest of the regulations and bringing it all together. So that's, those are basically the remaining pieces of the puzzle here.
Um, Paul? If we go to building type, we also need to make sure we understand how to address the fact that we'd be losing the density bonus for affordable housing.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, well, it looks like uh it's still a pretty big list.
It's a big list, but it's getting, um, it's narrowing significantly.
It's much smaller. I mean, the last time I was in front of the city council, it was like this unwieldy, like, 30 page um complicated thing. So this is much better.
Yeah, um, Jessica, you had asked me after the last, not last night's meeting, but the, the meeting before, whether any of these pieces could move forward um to the city council without the rest of them. So for example, could you do the environmental protection standards to show, you know, some progress uh, to the city council um as, as adopting that? Um, I've been thinking about that and it is possible to do some of the pieces without all of the pieces. The, the tricky part is gonna be if you decide to do the, say, the environmental protection standards and the forest blocks, the way that um property owners are being sort of recompensed when there's a lot of forest blocks is through a conservation PUD. So we'd have to, if, if you were gonna move forward with environmental protection standards, we'd have to either figure out how to do conservation PUDs or at least sort of build in a what to do in the meantime. Um, you know, you get an exemption on X amount of your forest land or something like that. Um, the subdivisions are pretty close, as you've just seen in the master plan. The only tricky part about that is that currently subdivisions, master plans and PUDs are literally just tied together. So we'd have to untie to keep the old PUDs while we, um, while we worked on the rest. So I, I think it still makes sense to do it all together. But if commissioners feel strongly that some pieces that really need to move forward, then we'll find a way.
And I think that this is a question the council is gonna ask. I've had individual counselors already ask me. So um, it's good that you bring this up. It's, it sounds like it's not easy and it's extra work to do parts of it alone, is what I'm hearing.
Yeah, I advocate for keeping it all together unless the council specifically wanted something broken out.
I, I think the big problem is that if you wanted to do the environmental protection standards first, that's the stick to the development community without the carrot part of it, which makes, you know, a lot of this more palatable. And I, I shouldn't just say development community, affordable housing, et cetera. That, that's, you know, one side is how to make it easier to build. The other side is how to protect more areas.
So Paul, when is the current interim zoning expiring? And what might the council consider in terms of an extension? Cause it would really be, be really nice for this to all wrap up during an interim zoning. I bet we can it during this.
Current interim zoning expires on November 13th. That will be the completion of the initial two years. Under Vermont law, a legislative body, the city council, can adopt interim zoning for an initial period of two years, which the council did. And they set their own markers in between of having public hearings every three months. And then at the end of the two years, they can choose to extend it for up to one more year if they choose. So on Monday, they will be holding a public hearing to consider whether to extend for some period of time beyond November 13th. So that's, that's their decision point. And that's where um, uh, Jessica's been asked to give a status update on this work.
Are they asking for a planning commission perspective on that? Or do we just go to the public hearing?
They may.
They've asked for, um, we've, we slated 15 minutes for Jessica to give a sort of an overview of where things are at. Um, I don't know whether they're, whether they're gonna be seeking the planning commission's feedback on whether to extend it or not, but they certainly wanted a status report of how far you are from the finish line, I think.
That was gonna be my question, Paul, is what, what is the finish line? How, how far are we from the finish line? I'm just thinking, I, I, I agree. I think it should all go in together because it all makes sense together.
Yeah.
But how, how far are, are we? Realistically.
Realistically, um, you know, I think that over the next, before the holidays, you can be in a place where you've now seen virtually all the language. You may, you know, I imagine you'll probably want to take a little bit of time to synthesize it all together, maybe in, in January. And then want to share it widely with the public as you've been talking about doing to give people a chance to really weigh in and, you know, if we can do any advertising and let people know about the habitat blocks and all these things. You know, let's say, you know, so that puts you into the sort of like late winter realistically to be worn, to be holding, well, to, to be taking any action, I guess, to give to council.
So.
But I'm, I wanna be realistic.
Yeah, it's, it's not that next month. So it, it feels like by, like, spring is the earliest we'd be sending anything to council. Because if we see it all in the next bit here before this year, synthesize, you know, spend a bunch of meetings really working through the details, January, then February, March, we're having meetings to get public input. I mean, and I think that that's gonna be significant. We're gonna wanna really actually follow up on some of that. And then we have our whole series of official public hearings, you know, which takes six weeks.
Right. Now, you could, you could, you could probably combine a little bit of that in that you could, you can hold your public hearing on, on a complete draft whenever you want to do it. And you can make the changes that you choose to afterwards. So you could, the public hearing could be the kickoff if you wanted, for instance, to the public input, as long as you have a complete draft.
Great.
So.
Well, so at late winter at the earliest.
But I would remind them that we had a five-month act of God situation where we had no meetings. We were just absolutely stalled out, five, five months.
It's a good point, Monica. I have not um specifically had any commissioners um or counselors um say anything negative or any, you know, at least at this point. So I'm, I'm not expecting uh anyone to be angry or, or for us to feel defensive, but.
Right, no, I just, I personally hope that they give an extension at least a little bit more because that, we lost all that time. And I think keeping it together would be fantastic. I know the community is like ready for it to be done, but I hope that they give us a, a little bit more of an extension to tie this all together.
Yeah. Okay. Good. And I think this is a great list. Thanks for getting it together, Paul. Um, this is really.
Sure. Uh, Jessica, would you like to coordinate on um, um, sometime between now and the end of the week to how you want to talk to, what you want to highlight to council?
Yes, please.
Okay.
Pretty of Friday, Thursday and Friday, so we can find a time.
All right. Everyone, thank you for doing two nights in a row. I really appreciate it. I'm sure that you might have had other things that you also were hoping to do with your, with your evenings, but thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, everybody. Have a good one.
Bye.
Have a good night.